This meeting will now come to order. Clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Binzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Patanna.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leone.
Here.
Council liaison Boden.
Here.
And council liaison Camacho.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of December 1st, 2015. We have one item on the study session agenda tonight, and that is proposed near-term transit service enhancements. Ms. Swenson.
Indeed, yes. Thank you, Mayor Carlet, and council members. It is just the one item this evening, but an important item, and it has to do with bus service in the city. Not something that's on your agenda frequently, but it is something that we work on continuously to try to make sure that we're positioning Peoria to receive improved transit service. And as you know, it's a complicated intergovernmental regime in terms of how public transit is apportioned and funded and decided upon in the region, and each community has to work hard to make sure that they get the best service possible for their constituents. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the planning that's underway and ideas for improving and strategies for improving transit. So I'll turn it over to Bill Mattingly, our Public Works and Utilities Director. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Mayor and council, pleased to be here before you this evening to talk about transit services. Before I get started, I'd like to do some introductions. To my right is Stuart Kent. He's our Deputy Public Works Director. And to his right is Alicia Becker, and she's a project manager for Valley Metro, and she has been working, she and her agency has been working very closely with us on preparing these plans that I'll be talking about here this evening. So staff has been working with Valley Metro for about a year and a half on a couple of different programs. One we're going to talk about here is the proposal to extend bus service on 83rd Avenue from where it currently terminates in Phoenix on, at Camelback, and we would extend that up to Bell Road. But we're also looking at the feasibility and cost to do a circulator, which would be a local, smaller bus, a smaller bus that would serve a route that gets into further north in Peoria from 83rd and Bell that would get as far north as Happy Valley and Lake Pleasant Parkway and then come back south. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later on. A separate but parallel project that we've been working on with Valley Metro are, in fact, two projects. One is a park-and-ride lot and a transit center. Those are two projects in the regional transportation plan, but we're looking at co-locating those at the same site. So we're kind of looking at it as a single project. So I'll get into that in a little bit here. So what I'll start out with is talking about what our current services are, what our proposals are for extending bus service, both the fixed route, the 83rd Avenue route, and the circulator route. And then I'll briefly talk about the park-and-ride and transit center, and then we'll talk about how these services could be funded. By way of background, transit service is delivered in the valley through the regional system. Valley Metro operates that system. Phoenix operates some of the routes, but it is primarily a regional system. In Peoria, we also have our local dial-a-ride. Because we have very few fixed routes within Peoria, our dial-a-ride serves citywide. So that's a service that we have that supplements those regional services. And the connection, and the key connection, is to make these services work together so that you can get people from dial-a-ride to the regional system. And any routes that we have within Peoria, we want to connect to the regional system to make it as seamless as possible. Our key stakeholders in this process are our partners across the valley in the form of MAG. And MAG's generally role is to administer federal grant processes and deal with the federal dollars, and they're also engaged in the planning of new routes and services. Valley Metro has kind of a parallel role. They also plan, help us to plan for these routes, but they also are responsible for operating the bus routes, and they use contractors such as Viola and Total Transit to deliver bus services throughout the valley. The major sources of funding for transit in the valley is Prop 400. And I'll keep referring to Proposition 400 shorthand, Prop 400, which was the regional transportation sales tax that was passed in 2004, and that tax sunsets in 2026. And in that, in that sales tax, there were a number of programs, whether they were arterial routes, whether they were freeways such as 303 in Peoria, and a variety of transit projects throughout the valley that are listed in their plan. There is also, complimentary to the Prop 400 funding, federal dollars. So there are federal Transportation Authority dollars that help to support these programs as well. In addition, we have the City of Peoria Transportation Sales Tax. Now, this is our local transportation sales tax that was passed in 2005, and that transportation sales tax has been used for a variety of purposes, both for roadways, and some of the money has been earmarked for transit. And that's one of the funding sources we'll be talking about here. By way of roadways, just for reference, the Happy Valley Parkway was completed using our local transportation sales tax. We did a variety, and planned to do a variety, of intersection improvements on Thunderbird Road at 91st Avenue, Thunderbird, 83rd Avenue, Thunderbird 75th, Cactus and 75th, Peoria and 75th. They're all the kinds of projects we're talking about for intersection improvements, which would improve traffic flow through those various areas. The Prop 400, excuse me, our local transportation sales tax also supplements the HERF, the Highway User Revenue Fund, which is the gas tax that provides for our payment management program, our payment rehabilitation program. So our local transportation sales tax supplements that program to some extent. We use that tax also for certain one-time funds as the funds are available, excuse me, one-time projects as those funds are available. As I said earlier, our transportation sales tax also supports transit. In our case, it also supports a portion of our dial-a-ride. It, in fact, is the primary source for our dial-a-ride service. We had prior funding that was lottery funding. They refer to that as LTAF. There's LTAF 1 and LTAF 2. And some of the council may recall that during the downturn, the legislature took the LTAF 1 dollars away, and with that, they took away a substantial amount of the funding that we had used for, previously used for dial-a-ride, and we've been supporting that with our local transportation sales tax subsequently to that. But there are still dollars available within that fund to support new transit services. So I'm going to describe what I call fixed route. Fixed routes are the large buses, the arterial route buses, and these are the ones, these are the services that are more Peoria-centric. Now, keep in mind that each of these red lines connect to the regional system to the south and to the east, so to Phoenix and to Glendale. The Peoria route starts at 105th Avenue where Boswell Hospital is, and it runs all the way to the east to the Sunny Slope Transit Center. The Thunderbird Route, which just started last year, again links up with the Peoria Route at 105th Avenue near Boswell and continues east to the Paradise Valley Transit Center. The Grand Avenue Limited is a route that is, limited is probably a good name for it. It starts in Peoria, goes to downtown. It has two trips in the AM to downtown, two trips from Phoenix to Peoria in the PM. So it is an opportunity for folks to get to downtown Phoenix, but it is a very limited in terms of service route. So what are we proposing? We're proposing to implement a north-south route in Peoria, and 83rd Avenue is a route that makes a lot of sense. This route would start at Bell Road and extend south all the way to the Desert Sky Transit Center. So it goes all the way down to I-10, in effect. So it is a, it's a key route north-south for Peoria, and it also helps to expand transportation in the entire West Valley. It hits a number of key destinations within the city of Peoria, including Pioneer Park, this City Hall complex, Old Town, the Center for Performing Arts, Peoria High School, Trine University, P-83, and the Peoria Sports Complex. So it's a good route as a good next route. So in terms of costs, the initial capital cost is $2.8 million, and that's to buy five buses. The five buses would be regionally funded. MAG would purchase those along with about 100 other buses that they're planning to buy to expand or, and/or replace old buses in the, in the system. You see an illustration of what these buses look like. You see these on the street all the time. The, the, losing my thought there. The cost for the buses would be funded regionally, and then the city of Peoria would be responsible for operating costs, which are $1.1 million a year. We would start this route on the proposal that Peoria would fund it. We would subsequently seek regional funding and continue to work with our partners to get the region to take over the cost of this route. There's no guarantee that that will happen, but it's part of our focused plan to work with the region to get them to take this route over as a regional route so that we can free those monies up for other purposes, perhaps for our own circulator route. It takes 24 months to buy a bus. This is where I kind of lost my thought a minute ago, to 18 to 24 months to buy a bus. And so we would not be able to implement this service until the fall of 2017 or the spring of 2018. We have already indicated as a staff that we are very interested in being part of those new bus purchases. With later discussion and input from council, we can give further direction to the MAG that we do indeed want to buy these buses, and we are committed to go ahead in starting Another route that we talked about is a north circulator route, and this route that you see here would be locally funded. Circulators are entirely locally funded. They are in use across the valley, and they are smaller buses, and I'll show you an illustration of those shortly. This one would start where the 83rd Avenue route ends at 83rd and Bell, and would extend north to the north part of Peoria. This illustration shows it on 83rd Avenue to Lake Pleasant Parkway, to Happy Valley Road, across Happy Valley, down 83rd, back to the point of origin. You would run buses, two buses each direction at 30-minute intervals, and I'll talk about the purchase of the buses here in a second. So this is a schematic of what that service could look like. That may not be exactly this route. We may decide that later on. It's not something we need to determine at this point in time, but we wanted to get an order of cost to implement this service, and this is the route that we selected to make that determination. So in this case, these buses are smaller. Here's an illustration of what those look like. These can be locally branded or themed. We can make them look like anything we want them to look like. Other cities have done different things. Glendale has what they call a Glendale Urban Shuttle, or GUS. Avondale has a circulator they call Zoom. Tempe has a number of buses that they have, they call Orbit. So we can be as creative as we want to be in terms of how we want to label these buses. So again, we will look to buy five buses, and the cost to buy those is $890,000 in today's dollars, and the operating cost would be $674,000 a year. And again, that would be Peoria's costs. I'm going to transition from talking about buses to facilities, and the facilities are talking about are that other piece, and that's the park-and-ride transit center. And with the implementation of an 83rd Avenue route, we would have service on Grand Avenue, 83rd Avenue, and Peoria Avenue. So we would have three bus routes coming together at one location, and a very logical location for that center would be along Grand Avenue, near Peoria, 83rd Avenue, in just north of the Old Town area. This shows that location. It's across the street from Old Town, Peoria, across from Azuna Park, and to the upper right-hand portion of the photo is Trailer Supply, so that's the, the new trailer place that's across there. This would initially be a park-and-ride facility. We would expand it as necessary and grow it into a transit facility. That's kind of what we anticipate we would do. The important thing about this is it's not just adjacent to Grand Avenue, but the railroad there, and that gives us opportunities for future commuter rail service. That service is 10 to 20 years in the future, but if you're going to put a stake in the ground, you want to buy real estate, this is the place to do it, next to the railroad. So as I indicated, we believe that this might be implemented in phases. We have been working with Valley Metro on a study. We'll conclude that study early spring of next year, so the February-March timeframe, we will conclude that study. We'll identify the site and then move forward with the acquisition of that site, depending on consensus around that site. We do have two park-and-ride lots in our Old Town area. Those lots would remain. They are very important for parking in the Old Town area, for the community theater, and for other businesses in the downtown area. So we would retain those lots. We wouldn't get rid of them. They would be ours to use as we see fit. The future park-and-ride will have covered parking. It'll be landscaped, and it'll have shaded areas. And Mayor Carlet, this would be similar to the one at Happy Valley Road and I-17. This has regional funding. The regional funding that's been identified in the transit, in the transit plan is $6.55 million. Now, the regional funding is a combination between federal funding and the Prop 400 funding. So the construction, the land acquisition would all be paid for regionally, but at its completion, Peoria would be responsible to operate and maintain the park-and-ride lot. The second phase, we would anticipate, on the same property, would be a transit center. A transit center is really a place for transferring from one bus to another, or ultimately transferring from buses to another mode of transportation, in this example, commuter This has $2.55 million in regional funding, again, federal dollars and Prop 400 dollars. And again, at the conclusion of this, the city of Peoria would be responsible to operate and maintain this facility. So what staff is looking for today is to seek council consensus to move forward on, first, the implementation of the 83rd Avenue route. We would explore, and continue to explore, those opportunities to extend that 83rd Avenue route with a circulator. That could be with other funds that we identify, or it could be with the replacement of regional dollars for the 83rd Avenue route, freeing up Peoria dollars to pay for that circulator. Our next steps would include working with Valley Metro for the planning for the park-and-ride transit center as we described. And what we would try to do is outline our strategy and be consistent in our outline of our strategy to implement the 83rd Avenue route first, work on the circulator route in parallel with that. At the same time, we're working on a park-and-ride and a transit center, which are two separate projects that would ideally come together at the same time. In other words, the 83rd Avenue route is operating, and the park-and-ride lot is available at the time that that route begins. That's what I have in terms of a presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be pleased to take them.
Okay. Counsel, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, first off, I want to thank you and Stuart for your tireless work, because I sit on the Valley Metro Board, and I know that you guys are on top of it every step of the way, making sure that Peoria has a state, a stake at the table. And I know that you guys have done a phenomenal job. Could you go back to the, the rendering of the route on 83rd Avenue and maybe explain to everybody what it's going to take as far as inlets on 83rd Avenue? Do we already have some of those areas in place so there's minimal construction going forward when we actually, you know, get a bus route on 83rd Avenue?
Vice Mayor Edwards, I'll do that. You have bus turnouts. Some of them are already in place. You can do a bus route without actually having those turnouts, and in fact, on Peoria Avenue and Thunderbird Avenue, or Thunderbird Road, we don't have bus turnouts for the most part. We do have bus stops, and you want bus shelters, and you want the proper number of bus shelters at key locations. We do have some new bus turnouts that we've been installing. When we did Pioneer Park, we put in bus turnouts there, and as we continue to do improvements on our major arterials and 83rd Avenue in particular, we want to install those, those bus turnouts. One opportunity might be, as we look at implementing a park-and-ride lot, for example, and we had a $6.5 million budget for that. If that actual cost was less than that, we would seek to reprogram some of those dollars to help us build bus turnouts, and perhaps even some enhanced transit bus, bus shelters, something that's a little more fancy than, than the ones we have at most locations. So you would do perhaps a themed location in the Old Town area, and maybe a themed location at P-83, and then you'd have the normal bus shelters throughout the route itself. So the answer is there are some bus turnouts that we're installing, recently installed. We don't need them necessarily to commence the service. They're ideal for delivering the service.
I'm just saying that you're, you obviously are thinking ahead as you're, as you're doing your road designs that, and which is critical as you're moving forward, you're keeping in mind that you want to have a bus route there. So you guys are making those decisions and budgeting for them so that we don't have to go back a year from now and say, you know, that we need additional money to put in a turnout for bus stops. So that's, that's what is commendable. What you also failed to mention is that, you know, Glendale is putting a regional transit center at Arrowhead Mall, and so, you know, this will tie into that as well. So now, not only will we have a regional transit center down south, but Glendale's going to have one, which will take you even more destinations that currently aren't there.
That's correct. When you get to Bell Road, you're at that Glendale Transit Center. So when I said Bell Road, literally, we would go to that transit center.
Absolutely. So I mean, it gives you, it opens up a world of opportunities. And as far as the circulator, I mean, I know in talking with residents for a number of years, that seems to be the biggest sore spot, is that there's a lot of people that want to come down to P-83, down to Old Town, just don't have the means to get there. And I think by having that commuter, you know, circular opens up just a world of opportunity for all of the residents of Peoria. So I'd want to thank you and your staff for keeping Peoria in play here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselmember Patanna?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, the original bus route on 83rd Avenue is going to go from approximately I-10 to Bell Road, and then the circulator's going to go from Bell Road to around Happy Valley and then back down. Is that, are those going to be simultaneously started together, or are they gonna, is one going to follow the other, or how's it going to work?
Counselor Patanna, the, the plan would be to do the 83rd Avenue fixed route, stopping at Bell or the transit center, as the Vice Mayor alluded to, the Arrowhead Transit Center, and then look to see where we could get the funding for the circulator. If we could identify the funding early for the circulator, then there would be an opportunity, perhaps, to do those more simultaneously. The more likely scenario, I would think, is that you, you start the 83rd Avenue route, you can, you get it to Arrowhead Town Center. When you find that the region will take over the funding for the 83rd Avenue route, then Peoria will have the funding through its transportation sales tax to fund that, that circulator. But there, again, that's not the only opportunity, but that's the one that's most apparent to us now.
Okay. My second question is, have, have the LTAF funds been reinstated or not yet?
The LTAF 1 funds have not been reinstated, and we don't anticipate those coming back. They also swept LTAF 2, but with a lot of hard work with other cities, the legislature had that overturned, and they had to reinstate those. So those are there, and we see those as, you know, long-term funding, but the LTAF 1 is not likely to come back.
Okay. Is there any, I heard a long time ago, the price of running a bus route one mile. Any idea the cost of that, to run a bus route just one mile?
Stuart, you want to take that?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Patanna, it depends, Valley Metro's cost and Phoenix's, but it's in the range of $100,000 a mile, that's separate from the capital cost, just the annual operating cost. So this route we're talking about for Peoria would be a little over nine miles, and so that's how we're getting to that roughly $1.1 million cost to operate it on an annual basis.
Counselmember Finn?
Thank you. Two questions. You mentioned how many times the circulator was going to go around. I think you said every 30 minutes. Is that correct?
Yes, we're looking at 30-minute frequencies. That's what we did on both the arterial routes, 83rd Avenue routes, and the circulator. We anticipated that frequency.
So the 83rd is going to be every 30 minutes as well?
Yes, it would be, yes. And that would be identical to the services on Peoria, Thunderbird, and the current 83rd Avenue route.
Okay. That answers question one, number one. Thank you. And then the demand for that circulator route, how do you, how did you go about assessing that demand? How do you know that there's actually a demand that will, that will be using that at 30-minute increments?
Stuart, you want to try and take that one?
Sure, absolutely. Mayor, Councilmember Finn, the, the circulator numbers are a little harder. The report talks about sort of an estimated boardings per mile, and if I'm remembering right, I want to say it's .8, 1.3. I think it's 1.3 boardings per mile, which is a measure of how many people get on and off per mile throughout the entire operating day. Again, I think as development continues through the north area of the city, those numbers would only increase. And again, as we asked Valley Metro and Alicia and her staff to work through it, it's sort of a snapshot in time. We didn't project, well, what will those numbers be in 2025 or anything like that? To provide some context, the numbers for the 83rd Avenue route are much higher, more like 1.7, 1.8. So it's a, it's a, it would be a very strong route. And again, as Bill alluded to, it really runs through the spine of the city, and it really becomes that connection point for so many other routes that run east-west to take that 83rd Avenue route.
Okay. So 1.8 per mile, but how, how did you go about making that? Is that just based on population, or how?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hit it correctly. Mayor, Councilmember?
I probably didn't ask it correctly.
No, no, you were fine. Councilmember Finn, the, there are a number of factors that take into account. Valley Metro looks at not only the number of households that have one car or no car. They look at overall socioeconomic status of the area. They look at other ridership across the valley in similar routes. So they may be looking at routes in Phoenix or Glendale that are similarly populated. You're looking at multifamily housing, employment centers. All those sort of factors are figured into what the estimated boardings per mile would equate to.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've got another question with regards to the circulator. This is something that's very near and dear to my heart because we have a lot of people in the northern part of the city who would like to participate in things that are in the central or southern part of the city, and, and so they would use that not necessarily for connecting with other bus, bus service, but, but having that as a destination. So what would we be able to put in place for that last mile, or that last half-mile, where they would get off the bus and then go to P-83, or get off the bus and go to the theater in downtown? Do you understand my question?
I think I do.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor, if I understand your question, you're essentially saying getting from the north end of the mall to P-83 proper, what would that cost be? Is that why?
I'm talking about when they get off the bus.
Right.
And they still need to get to the sports complex. So we're at the, we're at the park-and-ride, the Arrowhead Park-and-Ride, I understand. Then they, they need to go another half-mile or a mile. So what is the, what is the method that you're planning to have for the last mile?
So again, we're talking about the circulator that gets you to the transit center.
Circulator.
That would be, we can do it a number of different ways. One would be to transfer from the circulator to the 83rd Avenue route, which has a number of bus stops all along 83rd Avenue. Getting back to the Vice Mayor's question, we'll have bus stops all along the route, just as we do on Thunderbird and on Peoria. Alternatively, we could determine to take the circulator down to the sports complex itself and avoid the transfer, if you would.
Okay. And so the circulator is going to have the ability for, for us to be flexible and changeable based on events and spring training, if you will? Other, other things that are going to occur in the city of Peoria? It's our bus?
Mayor, we can design it any way we choose. What you are really designing, though, is a, is a, a normal frequency of service. So again, you're like 30-minute frequency on fixed number of days. If we thought that we wanted to do something special for special events, we could, we could design those services. If we thought that there was a peak season, for example, the holiday season, or if we thought that the spring training was, was a higher demand, we could modify that service or enhance that service to do that. Again, it's all locally funded. We can design it to suit us.
Good. That's great. That's great to hear. That makes it so much more valuable for our residents. Thank you. Counsel, any further questions or comments? Ms. Hunt?
Well, obviously, this really affects the southern area of Peoria as well as linking it to the north, and I do want to say thank you. And it's time that the west part of the valley started getting some, some attention from MAG and from other sources. So you guys fight the good fight, and I think having two of our people on those councils will really help as well. So this, this is amazing. Very happy about it.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation.
So Mayor, if you agree that we're going to move forward with this 83rd Avenue route as quickly as possible, again, we'll move forward with the park-and-ride, complete that study, bring that back to you. And so the next thing you should be seeing from us will be the, the park-and-ride fixing on the location and then laying out a plan to acquire property and build a park-and-ride.
I'm seeing consensus here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we are adjourned until our 7 o'clock meeting.